Good morning, everyone. Welcome again to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, August 8th, 2003. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. Four members of the public unable to attend council meetings can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is now 10:20 a.m. and we do have seven members present at this time, three shy of a quorum. But as this is Friday, we do have, as customary, a number of special introductions and presentations to be made. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Missakowski.
Good morning, members of the council. I am very pleased to start off today's recognition presentations and resolutions with a resolution being presented to Stan Stanley Cizek. Stan has a long and illustrious career with the city. He began in 1969 as a civil engineering assistant in the Department of Public Works, the Bureau of Engineering. And he liked that job and went to that job because he thought it gave him the opportunity to deal with a lot of the aspects of his engineering profession and then more here than he might have gotten anywhere else. Throughout his career, he worked well in that bureau, did all sorts of things, not only project management, street and transit design and improvements, structures, wastewater, traffic signal design, transportation district operations, stormwater, private development review and oversight. He also was the council liaison here. We used to have a council, the city engineer, sit with the council most often and Stan performed that function as well as contract compliance. One of the other things that he did, not only in enjoying his job so much, was that he took that enthusiasm and zest for that job and turned it into a lot of the professional associations that he rose in the ranks in terms of both membership and participation. But I think most importantly, he wanted to turn young people on to science, to engineering, to let them see what they could become, what they could build, what they could do. And I think that has been, you know, one of his greatest assets and our asset here, having him in the city. Because he has been an instructor to young people, telling them to get those degrees in engineering and science, mentoring the young engineers when they come here to the city to show them what they can do and what they can become. He has demonstrated that willingness to contribute in all parts of his life and I think for 34 years, he has been that person, that stable person to go to here. I think it was just a few years ago that he actually left the Bureau of Engineering to become the chief inspector of public works projects in the city and headed up the Bureau of Contract Administration. What that job is responsible for is making sure that the projects our engineers have designed are built well and built to the specifications that we've set out there by the contractors that we have out on our city streets and out doing our city public works projects. Members, we hear an awful lot about infrastructure and how important it is to the city and how we have to keep it up and how complex it is. Stan is the man who could probably sit here and make it not seem complex, make it seem easy, because he has a love for it, he has a zest for it, and he's probably looked at almost every part of every city public works project that we've had in these 34 years. So it's with great regret, actually, that we say goodbye to him today. I know that, I think Tom LeBange and I are two who love, actually, not maybe love, but love standing here with our longtime city employees. Because as longtime city employees, we've had the pleasure, I know I've had the pleasure, to work with people who we stand next to, who were our young, who mentored us when I was a young council aide. Stan was in the West Los Angeles Bureau of Engineering and when you are a person coming into council or coming into a council staff and trying to figure out, not being an engineer, what those projects mean, how they work, how you get something done, why something is designed a certain way, this was the man who not only mentored the engineers in the Bureau, but us as well on the council, me personally. So I am personally going to miss him a lot. And one of the other fun things we do when we give these is we know these people and their commitment to their work and relish and appreciate that. But I just had to share with everyone, this one is a great picture of Stan in another part of his life, Stan sitting behind a set of drums. So outside of his work, outside of his professional integrity, he also has fun, looks like a good guy to hang around with on the dance floor. And I hope that he will enjoy his retirement and particularly taking that hobby that he's enjoyed in terms of refurbishing and remodeling houses into a new business where he can put those technical skills and that knowledge into really hands-on construction. So Stan, it's going to be a real shame to see you go, but I think you're going to have a great time and I have personally appreciated many of those 34 years that you've been here because we've been here together. So thank you very, very much and congratulations.
Mr. LeBange.
Hi, Councilmember Missakowski. Thank you for honoring Stan and it is great when we grow up with these dedicated, focused, look at the lens, Stan, right there, I've got it, problem solvers who work for many different bureaus of our Public Works Department. But members, I just want to say where Stan was most helpful, Cindy, and I'm sorry Ron Deaton is not in here, is when the city engineer had a desk in this chamber. And Greg, you remember that, you'd go right to that engineer, Stan was here as the council liaison and solved so many problems. Stan, I want to thank you and also congratulate you for becoming a bureau chief and now retiring from your years of city service and your great friendship with Pat Mount, who I know you used to ride the train with when you'd commute home many, many years ago. Thank you, Stan, and congratulations on your years of service. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Smith.
I join with Tom in my regards for Stan. I know that over the years, if you wanted to talk to somebody in Board of Public Works, you went to Stan, he was reliable, trustworthy, he knew what he was talking about and he always gave you a straight answer. And that's why he rose so high in his 34 years in this city to the important role of being contract ad, when nobody knows what it does except the insiders, and it was probably the most low-key hidden job in City Hall, but one of our most important, because it's all those projects we're out there building, we required a contract ad to go out and look at them, to accept them before the city used them. So we had things built, they made sure that it was done right, the code, that we were getting our money's worth out of these contractors, our streets were repaired properly, and whatever they did over contract ad, Stan was the guy that made sure to get done. But more important, I just remember the many years you're sitting in this building and whenever we needed something from an engineer, we went to you and we got it done. And you're just a great civil servant and I congratulate you on 34 years of being with the city and wish you the best in your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy Missakowski. And Mr. President, council members, I'd like to very quickly just ask my family and in-laws and nephews and nieces to stand up, please, to be recognized. They're the ones that have supported me throughout my career and we also have a number of folks here from at least Contract Administration, if not Engineering, and a few other departments and bureaus. And I'm going to keep this real short, I just really appreciate the opportunity to come here and thank you for a tremendous career. It really has been a blessing to me. I've enjoyed every assignment that I've had and I've had dozens of them. And I'll just relate to one anecdote, since my council liaison time, which was back in the late 80s and early 90s, I spent about three years in that desk there that doesn't exist anymore. And that is that I was a civil engineer at the time and I was given the assignment by one of our former chief deputy city engineers, Ralph Valenzuela, bless us all. And after I'd spent perhaps the better part of a year there, I went to Mr. Valenzuela and I told him, I said, you know, "If you were to tell me, Stan, I have good news and bad news, the bad news is that, you know, we really don't think you have much of a future, we're not going to promote you anymore throughout the ranks, but the good news is that we're going to let you stay in council liaison for the rest of your career." I told him I would be happy, because that was really an exciting job. You really find out how things work and you really develop appreciation for the cumulative and collective wisdom and all the decisions that are made here in this room. And I especially, again, want to thank Councilmember Missakowski, Cindy. Yeah, I knew you and admired the work you did when, what was it, No on O and Yes on P or some one of those things, all that drilling in the Palisades and just all the work and dedication that you did and you're a marvelous role model example too. And that's why I really appreciate the fact that you're willing to be the one presenting with my retirement resolution. And thank you all, appreciate it.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, council, Mr. President, thank you very much for the opportunity to introduce to you a very special group of young people. You know, every year we go through a number of city championships here and we bring down teams with great pride that represent various communities of the city of L.A. who've accomplished extraordinary feats by winning city championships. But today, we recognize somebody that's gone far beyond that. I'm very happy to have with me here today the Honorable John Lorenzen, the new school board member for the Chatsworth area, my part of the San Fernando Valley. He came down with us today because this group of students not only won the city championship in baseball, but the Chatsworth High School students went on and won the national championship in baseball. This is incredible.[947.12]
Street and transit design and improvements, structures, wastewater, traffic signal design, transportation district operations, stormwater, private development review and oversight. He also was the council liaison here. We used to have a council, the city engineer, sit with the council most often and stand, perform that function, as well as contract compliance. One of the other things that he did, not only in enjoying his job so much, was that he took that enthusiasm and zest for that job and turned it into a lot of the professional associations that he rose in the ranks in terms of both membership and participation. But I think most importantly, he wanted to turn young people on to science, to engineering, to let them see what they could become, what they could build, what they could do. And I think that has been, you know, one of his greatest assets and our asset here, having him in the city. Because he has been an instructor to young people, telling them to get those degrees in engineering and science, mentoring the young engineers when they come here to the city to show them what they can do and what they can become. He has demonstrated that willingness to contribute in all parts of his life. And I think for 34 years, he has been that person, that's a stable person to go to here. I think it was just a few years ago that he actually left the Bureau of Engineering to become the chief inspector of public works projects in the city and headed up the Bureau of Contract Management, Contract Administration. What that job is responsible for is making sure that the projects our engineers have designed are built well and built to the specifications that we've set out there by the contractors that we have out on our city streets and out doing our city public works projects. Members, we hear an awful lot about infrastructure and how important it is to the city and how we have to keep it up and how complex it is. Stan is the man who could probably sit here and make it not seem complex, make it seem easy, because he has a love for it, he has a zest for it, and he's probably looked at almost every part of every city public works project that we've had in these 34 years. So it's with great regret, actually, that we say goodbye to him today. I know that, I think Tom Labange and I are too, who love, actually, not maybe love, but love standing here with our city, longtime city employees. Because as longtime city employees, we've had the pleasure, I know I've had the pleasure, to work with people who we stand next to, who were our young, who mentored us when I was a young council aide. Stan was in the West Los Angeles Bureau of Engineering. And when you are a person coming into council or coming into a council staff and trying to figure out, not being an engineer, what those projects mean, how they work, how you get something done, why something is designed a certain way. This was the man who not only mentored the engineers in the Bureau, but us as well on the council, me personally. So I am personally going to miss him a lot. And one of the other fun things we do when we give these is we know these people and their commitment to their work and relish and appreciate that. But I just had to share with everyone. This one is a great picture of Stan in another part of his life. Stan sitting behind a set of drums. So outside of his work, outside of his professional integrity, he also has fun. Looks like a good guy to hang around with on the dance floor. And I hope that he will enjoy his retirement and particularly taking that hobby that he's enjoyed in terms of refurbishing and remodeling houses into a new business where he can put those technical skills and that knowledge into really hands-on construction. So Stan, it's going to be a real shame to see you go, but I think you're going to have a great time. And I have personally appreciated many of those 34 years that you've been here because we've been here together. So thank you very, very much and congratulations.
Mr. Labange.
Oh, Tom.
Hi, Councilmember Miss Akowski. Thank you for honoring Stan. And it is great when we grow up with these dedicated, focused... Look at the lens, Stan, right there. Got a... Problem solvers who work for many different bureaus of our Public Works Department. But members, I just want to say where Stan was most helpful, Cindy, and I'm sorry Ron Deaton is not in here, is when the city engineer had a desk in this chamber. And Greg, you remember that. You'd go right to that engineer. Stan was here as the council liaison and solved so many problems. Stan, I want to thank you and also congratulate you for becoming a bureau chief and now retiring from your years of city service and your great friendship with Pat Mount, who I know you used to ride the train with when you'd commute home many, many years ago. Thank you, Stan, and congratulations on your years of service. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Smith.
I join with Tom in my regards for Stan. I know that over the years, if you wanted to talk to somebody in Board of Public Works, you went to Stan. He was reliable, trustworthy. He knew what he was talking about and he always gave you a straight answer. And that's why he rose so high in his 34 years in this city to the important role of being contract ad. But nobody knows what it does except the insiders. And it was probably the most low-key hidden job in City Hall, but one of our most important. Because it's all those projects we're out there building, we required a contract ad to go out and look at them, to accept them before the city used them. So we had things built. They made sure that it was done right, to code, that we were getting our money's worth out of these contractors. Our streets were repaired properly. And whatever they did over contract ad, Stan was the guy that made sure to get done. But more important, I just remember the many years you're sitting in this building. And whenever we needed something from an engineer, we went to you and we got it done. You're just a great civil servant. And I congratulate you on 34 years of being with the city and wish you the best in your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy Moskowsky. And Mr. President, councilmembers, I'd like to very quickly just ask my family and in-laws and nephews and nieces to stand up, please. Do you recognize? They're the ones that have supported me throughout my career. And we also have a number of folks here from at least Contract Administration, if not Engineering, and a few other departments and bureaus. And I'm going to keep this real short. I just really appreciate the opportunity to come here and thank you for a tremendous career. It really has been a blessing to me. I've enjoyed every assignment that I've had and I've had dozens of them. And I'll just relate to one anecdote. Since my council liaison time, which was back in the late 80s and early 90s, I spent about three years in that desk there that doesn't exist anymore. And that is that I was a civil engineer at the time and I was given the assignment by one of our former chief deputy city engineers, Ralph Valenzuela, bless his soul. And after I'd spent perhaps the better part of a year there, I went to Mr. Valenzuela and I told him, I said, you know, "If you were to tell me, Stan, I have good news and bad news." The bad news is that, you know, "We really don't think you have much of a future. We're not going to promote you anymore throughout the ranks. But the good news is that we're going to let you stay in council liaison for the rest of your career." I told him I would be happy because that was really an exciting job. You really find out how things work and you really develop appreciation for the cumulative and collective wisdom and all the decisions that are made here in this room. And I especially, again, want to thank Councilmember Miss Akowski, Cindy. Yeah, I knew you and admired the work you did when, what was it, No on O and Yes on P or some one of those things? All that drilling in the Palisades and just all the work and dedication that you did. You're a marvelous role model example, too. And that's why I really appreciate the fact that you're willing to be the one to present me with my retirement resolution. And thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you. Bye.
Thanks.
Mr. Smith for our next presentation.
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, council, Mr. President, thank you very much for the opportunity to introduce to you a very special group of young people. You know, every year we go through a number of city championships here and we bring down teams with great pride that represent various communities of the city of L.A. who've accomplished extraordinary feats by winning city championships. But today, we recognize somebody that's gone far beyond that. I'm very happy to have with me here today the Honorable John Lorenzen, the new school board member for the Chatsworth area, my part of the San Fernando Valley. He came down with us today because this group of students not only won the city championship in baseball, but the Chatsworth High School students went on and won the national championship in baseball. This is an incredible accomplishment. I can't recall in all my years here when we just recognized a bunch of students for winning a city championship, but also a national championship. This is an extraordinary group of young people that did extraordinary things. And we are so proud of the Chatsworth High School students, not for winning the city championship, but going on and giving the city of L.A. recognition throughout the United States of America as a great school district, doing great things for our kids. And in particular, the athleticism that is here in the Los Angeles area. I know Mr. Ludlow is very interested in youth sports. Here's an opportunity to recognize some great kids that went on and did just a phenomenal thing. This is not unusual for the Chatsworth baseball team to win a city championship. They've won it a number of times in the past, but never before have risen to this level of accomplishment. So to all of our students, on behalf of all the citizens of Los Angeles, I want to present to the Chatsworth chancellors this recognition of their championship baseball year and thank them for standing up for the city of L.A. Coach? I want to present to you the coach of the team, Tom Newborn, who led this team to their success. Coach, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us here today. It's a very special moment for us and an honor to be here. Thank you. It was a remarkable season for us. We won 33 out of 34 games. We finished number one in all three national polls, the USA Today, Baseball America, and Collegiate Baseball. Also, a special moment for me. I was recognized by USA Today as National High School Coach of the Year. So that was real special for me and I appreciate that. Thank you for bringing us here today.
Thank you, Coach. Mr. Lorenzen, would you like to say a few words on behalf of the school board?
On behalf of the community of Chatsworth and Los Angeles Unified School District, we are very, very proud of these young athletes. Not only are they world-class athletes, but most of them are world-class scholars as well. When we gave the awards out at Chatsworth, most of them were up there for academic awards as well as their athletic ability. So we're just really proud and pleased to have them honored here today. And thank you very much for doing that.
Can we hear from Mr. Ludlow and Mr. Labange?
Let me first pass out the certificates to the team and the coaches. You cannot possibly achieve this kind of success with an incredible coaching staff. And we've already introduced the coach, Tom Newborn, for your incredible accomplishments as a team leader, as well as a national leader, and winning the Coach of the Year. This resolution from the citizens of Los Angeles, congratulations. Also on the coaching staff is Fred Puttig. Charlie Hatfield. And Stuart Sells. Stuart's wife is also a schoolteacher in our district as well. The students that made this possible, Art Cisneros. Kevin Lee. Nimish Patel. Keith Reno. Zach Oesheim. Oliver Padre. Brian Peterson. Mike Fernandez. Thomas Cassidy. Willie Cabrera. Jared Kops. Matul Patel. Chris Fredericks. And Ross Liddell. Ladies and gentlemen, your national champions from Chatsworth.
Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, Councilmember Smith, I really appreciate you taking the time to do this. This is great. We recognize many people for many things, but bringing the winning baseball team here to City Hall, I think it's just a great, great honor for all of us and a real treat. Coach, we can't say enough about you. So many roles in society are those roles that people are compensated for, for every hour that they put in. And then there are those individuals who go beyond that. And I know with my experience with baseball and Little League and high school sports that you're not getting compensated for most of what you're doing. And so all of us here congratulate you. And then lastly, to the team members, you know, remember this moment, enjoy this moment. Over this summer, hopefully many of you will get a chance to experience some major league tryout camps. If the letters come, go out there, have fun. If it doesn't work out, use them as opportunities to get into school. And I hope many of you are going on to college and are going to continue to look to play baseball in college. But all of us here are so proud of you. Thank you for representing Los Angeles on a national level. Coach, job well done. Councilmember Smith, thanks for bringing everybody in today. Congratulations, y'all.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla, Coach, and our new school board member. Congratulations to you on your victory. But to the coach of the team, you're city champs. No one could take that away from you and the hard effort that all of you were involved and your commitment. And I just think it's just wonderful. I always wanted to be a city champ. And we never were at John Marshall High. But you are. And it's just so great to see the city champs, your dedication. Go back, and I'm going to just follow up on what Martin Ludlow said. Also, go back to your Little Leagues. Go back and pass the baton back, help out. I coached for seven years after my college days and it was a great experience. Martin coached, Bernard Parks coached. I'm not sure if anyone else coached. But it's a great experience to do that. And I just want to congratulate you. I also want to publicly thank the Los Angeles Dodgers who let the city championship game be played in Dodger Stadium, which I know is a thrill for everybody. And then I also want to invite you to use the greatest public field in Los Angeles, Pot Field in Crystal Springs at Griffith Park. You ever seen that, Coach? It's a very nice field now. I'd love to have the city champs play there anytime. I'll make the arrangements for you next year because I like to see youth baseball in my district. Thank you all very much.
But don't recruit into Marshall.
No, I won't do that.
Thank you.
For our next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Labange. Let me recognize Councilmember Katrinas for our next presentation. Mr. Parks, are you ready for your presentation?
Langenberg, thank you. Good morning, members. And I would ask if our colleague Jan Perry could join me. But every year at this time, we receive a great, great delegation from our first of 21 sister cities. But our first one that Los Angeles selected, oh, in the 1958, I believe, is our city, Sister City of Nagoya, Japan. Please welcome the city of Nagoya, Japan and their delegation. This has started Nisei Week and we have the great festival this weekend and parade in Little Tokyo where everyone is invited to attend and enjoy and watch the activity. But as president of Sister Cities, it's my pleasure to officially welcome them, along with the mayor and Jan Perry. And it's very special to have this group because we also have the Deputy Mayor of Nagoya, Yorusho Inden. Please welcome him, our Deputy Mayor. I said that wrong. I want to say it correctly because I want to know we're friends. Deputy Mayor Yorusho Inden. Oh, I got it. You get two claps, see? In Hollywood, you can do it twice. And the vice chairperson is pronounced. Yeah. Hideemi Kobayashi, who's the vice chairperson of the Nagoya City Assembly. Please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jan Perry is now joining us. Thank you, Jan, for coming down and in. And good to see you this morning.
Thank you.
Okay. This is our delegation. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Perry to present this to the whole delegation on behalf of the mayor and myself, if you would.
And I'm pleased to stand here today with my colleague here, Tom Labange and the contingent or delegation from Nagoya, Japan. And I've had the personal pleasure of at least landing in the airport and staying there for a few hours on several occasions and hope to spend time in your city very soon. And thank you so much for visiting us today.
We're going to present that in a moment. Ms. Kobayashi, you're going to address our council. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I am Hideemi Kobayashi and I am the vice chairperson of the Nagoya City Assembly. First of all, I'd like to thank President Padilla and for those, everybody who are present here, welcoming us, the city of Nagoya official delegation. On behalf of Deputy Mayor Inden and the other six representatives, the city of Nagoya's official delegation, I would like to express our gratitude that all of us are present here at the city council. This year, we celebrate the 44th anniversary of our Los Angeles and Nagoya Sister City Alliance. We are very delighted to have established friendly relationship. And of course, we are anxious that we're very close to 45th milestone next year. We should congratulate ourselves that we have strengthened our tight relationship over the years. Nagoya Assembly will be more than happy to support and further develop our mutual friendly relationship. It is a sincere wish that our friendly relationship will further grow. I humbly ask for the great city of Los Angeles and the city council for their continued devotion and generous support to strengthen the ties of friendship between our two cities. In the year 2005, the World Expo, Aichi, Japan, will be held in our region. And the theme for this expo is nature's wisdom. We hope that you will come and pay a goodwill visit to see them. Also, I wish to mention that I have learned that there are several female council members in the Los Angeles City Council. And it has been 114 years since the Nagoya Assembly was established in 1889. It is a great honor to be the first female vice chair in history of the Nagoya City Assembly to be present here. Again, I am very grateful that I had the opportunity to speak today at the city council as Nagoya's first female vice chair in our 44-year sister alliance history. Last but not least, on behalf of the Sister City Nagoya's official delegation, I thank all of you very much for your kind assistance and warm hospitality. We wish all of you best wishes and prosperous future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Arigato. And Ms. Kobayashi, the first woman in Japanese history of the Nagoya City Assembly to reach the role of assistant speaker. That's a big, big, that's another big hand. And Deputy Mayor Inden, thank you so much. Peter Langenberg, who's our president here. And Jean, I want to just do this here. Jean Tashia, who lives right up the street but has done a wonderful job for all Nagoya and Los Angeles here. Give Jean a big hand there. All right. Ronnie, get over here to take the group shot. We're going to get a quick shot. We'll be out of your way, Mr. President. We thank you. Come to the parade. Sunday at 4 o'clock at Little Tokyo. Take the gold line, blue line, red line, any line to Little Tokyo.
All lines in there.
Thank you, Councilmember Labange. For our next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to introduce you to a group that's here representing the 8th District. They are from the People's Coordinated Services Multi-Purpose Senior Citizen Facility at 5133 Crenshaw. They are coordinated here by a former city employee, Erlene Jordan, who worked for 12 years in the 8th District and three years with the CLA. But I'd like them to stand up, our senior group. They're here for a tour of City Hall and they're here for a review of city business at the city council. So we have you stand up. They're led here by 14 members, range in age of 68 to 98. And I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Commodore White, who is 98 years old.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. For your next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I would like to call up representatives today from this year's Nike's Nike Skill Squad. People from Nike. I am joined by Gilberto Sandoval, the tour manager, Lloyd Kinnear, Lawrence Smalls, James Ortega, Tim Donnelly, Moises Salinas. Did I miss anybody? Okay. Sarah O'Hagan, Robbie Labelle, and Mario Flores. This team was selected from over 700 Los Angeles-area street soccer players of all ages. Finalists were chosen during open auditions the center of major, major soccer activity with such events as the MLS All-Star Game, the Women's World Cup Finals, and the Nike Curb Cup on Saturday, August 30th, on First and Figueroa in downtown Los Angeles, right here in the great 9th district. The Nike Curb Cup will bring many soccer fans and area youth to downtown Los Angeles. As an added bonus, Nike will donate $10,000 in cash and Nike soccer equipment on behalf of winning teams to one of 10 nonprofits chosen by this team standing behind me. So I want to thank Nike for all they've done for our city and in the 9th district, and want to encourage everyone listening and those here in the chamber to come out for the Nike Curb on August 30th. I'd also like to take the time to thank the representatives who are here from us, here with us from Nike. Sarah O'Hagan, Nike Brand Marketing Director for the LA Region, Robbie LaBelle, Soccer Consultant, Mario Flores, PR Consultant. I would also like to take this time to extend a special thank you to Robbie LaBelle, who was instrumental in another incredible project in the 9th district. The beautiful state-of-the-art soccer field addition at Ross Snyder Park in South Los Angeles in the 9th district. Thanks to the help of Robbie and Nike, we now have this incredible soccer facility for the young people and for families and all those who are in love with soccer. And the field is made entirely of recycled Nike shoes. Now I would like to invite a member of the Nike Skill Squad to step forward and give you a brief sample of what they can do. You want to do it out there?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Right before we have the Skill Squad step out, my name is Robbie. I just wanted to thank Councilmember Perry and councilmembers here. In particular, your leadership and vision for bringing unique soccer experience to the children of Los Angeles on August 30th for the Curb Cup at First and Figueroa and downtown in the city streets of LA. So very excited. The guys behind me are here, they're promoting the tournament and giving kids a chance to step up and show what they can do after they see these guys demonstrate. And we usually do demonstrations and give out prizes to the kids. So don't be surprised if councilmembers, you're called out to perform. All right?
They perform every day.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is James Ortega, and I'm one of the soccer ballers, let's say callers, for Nike Skill Squad. I'd like to thank council for having us here. And I'd like to introduce my crew that's going to come out and perform. And we'd love to have some of you guys come and join us because it's always, it's fun, it's interactive, and that's our whole idea, is with children and also with adults as well. So again, my name is James. I'm an ex-professional soccer player for Los Angeles Blazers and played soccer all my life, and I love it. So this is Moises from, this is Moises right here from East LA, Boyle Heights, and he's going to come out and do some really good stuff. This is also Lawrence, come on up, Lawrence, representing Pasadena. And he's fantastic. And this is also Lloyd here, representing Venice, and he's going to come out and do some stuff for us. So if it's okay, we'll take the stage.
Okay. You can go right up here. Right in the middle. Yeah, it's fine. Right in the middle. You can go here or there, whatever works for you. Right in the middle.
Right in the middle.
Should we do the hitters? No. No. We don't have time.
Yeah, we don't have time. Just go.
That's all right, if he has one of them in the head. You want? Okay.
Great, great.
Wow.
Give him a kiss, give him a kiss.
Wow. Whoa. And the microphones. That's right. Wow. What's the back? What's the back? What's the back? Little hit it. That's amazing.
He's going to hit it.
Wow. That's great, thank you.
Usually what these guys do is challenge kids out of the crowd. We were thinking, actually, we challenged Councilmember Perry, but she has actually a bum knee, she told me.
Bad foot.
Bad foot, excuse me, bad foot. But you know, we were thinking possibly Councilmember Reyes could step out.
He'd like it, yeah, 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 yeah. Come on, Ed.
And perhaps, perhaps Councilmember Viragosa to challenge his rival from Roosevelt?
Yeah? No? Yeah, hit him in the head. Woo! 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 I know you didn't sustain any injuries, so you'd be very alert for the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
And let's thank them for this very unique and special presentation today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
That was great. Tell Juanita everything went well.
Good, good, good.
I know she's watching.
Mr. Cardenas?
We're going to go in the back and take a picture.
Great.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to go in the back, you guys. Okay, take a picture.
Yeah.
Okay, come on in back. You guys are funny. Keep us happy.
Hey. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Tony Cardenas and Councilmember Perry. Ms. Perry, you're being requested to go back with Mr. Cardenas for the next presentation.
Okay, you can get it set up. I'll be right there. Okay, why don't you, you go, okay, go ahead, and then I can do my thing, and then I'll run in the back and then come back.
Okay, you go first. If you're going to run in the back, go first.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm standing here with my colleague, Mr. Cardenas, and I want to take this opportunity to recognize student interns brought to us from the Department of Public Works. And these are the student interns from Montgomery Watson Harza Internship Program. This program fosters economic development, small, small business development, community relations, and youth education and awareness through its internship program. Through this program, minority students are exposed to career options by integrating classroom learning with work-based learning within the water and wastewater industry. These students were selected based on their outstanding academic achievements to participate in this program. They have thrived in important and gained important job skills. They were given necessary computer training and learned health and safety guidelines. It has also been a great opportunity for these young people to expand their understanding of our city and city departments, as the internship included field trips to city council and the Metropolitan Water District.
Thank you. I, I wanted to make sure that I said a few words about this program. I grew up to be an engineer in part of my life, and before I did that, I actually participated in summer programs in the field of engineering. And what Montgomery Watson Harza is doing is they're opening the eyes and the minds and the hearts of these young people to realize that they, as young men and women, could someday turn out to be engineers. Not the worst thing in the world. At least, I don't think so, right, Mr. Pariya? But I think it's something that's really important for us to understand, that many of the young people in this program would have never been exposed to these opportunities or to realize the wonderful world out there that they, they're going to grow into and be a part of. And this program does many things. For example, it exposes students to career options. It gives them the potential source of recruits to the industry as well as MWH. It commences their career focus in the young age while they're in high school. It continues the program through college as well. MWH participates in career fairs, and they've actually adopted four high schools throughout Los Angeles. With us today are two of the representatives from Montgomery Watson Harza, along with our young students. And the first one I'd like to introduce is Huron Winsted, the Director of Intergovernmental Affairs at Montgomery Watson Harza.
Thank you, Councilman Cardenas. As you mentioned, my name is Huron F. Winsted, and I am the Director of Intergovernmental Affairs for MWH. This program has really provided a venue for us to contribute to the economic and educational development of the city of Los Angeles. But this would not have been possible without the support, insight, and encouragement of Bureau of Public Works Commissioner Adriana Rubalcava. So at this time, I'd like to give her a round of applause from MWH and our interns.
Thank you. Thank you, Huron. And with that, we'd like to give you the certificate of recognition from our city of Los Angeles. Thank you very, very much for your good work and continued success in the future with our young people. Also with us today, with Montgomery Watson and Harza, is the Vice President and LA Business Unit Manager, Jeffrey Cartho.
Thank you, Councilman. I'd like to echo the comments by Huron in that we, we have gained a lot out of this program, as I'm sure the students have, in exposing them to future business opportunities and to future career opportunities. We look forward to continuing this program. We look forward to working, continuing to work with Commissioner Rubalcava in furthering this program into its full potential. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeffrey. And we have a certificate of recognition for you as well, for your commitment. And quite frankly, what I'd like to mention is, MWH is raising the bar for private industry interacting with us and our community, and I'd like to see more of this happen throughout the city of Los Angeles. Thank you so much for raising the bar and for the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I'd just like to acknowledge the young people who are here with us today, and I think they chose, I don't know if it, who drew the short straw. We're going to have a few comments from one of our, our students. Okay.
What's your name?
Lorenzo Rocha. He stepped forward, and he's going to say a few words.
I have a little speech about our experience as MWH interns. For the past five weeks that we have been interns at MWH, we have experienced and learned many things. We have acquired computer skills, writing skills, information about safety in the workplace, water treatment, job opportunities, and many things that we will use in the future as members of society. Therefore, we thank everyone that made this internship possible, since it taught us valuable information that we will need at different times in life. MWH has opened our eyes to the world of water treatment, since they have taught us about the importance of water for the future, and have made us better individuals as a result of the employment opportunities that they placed upon us. We hope that the same opportunities given to us during this internship will be given to other LA City high school youth, since it will help them plan their career goals more accurately because of this wonderful experience, just like I know it has happened with the summer 2003 interns. Thank you.
Very well put, Lorenzo. We have a group of, of students with us from Southwest Middle College High, Sherwin Bouche.
Bouche?
Bouche. It's French, I guess. Southwest Middle College High, Keisha Simpson. Downtown Business Magnet, Lynn Dang. Downtown Business Magnet, Quentin Leguinsda. Jordan High School, Samuel Morgan. Jordan High School, Lorenzo Rocha. King Drew Medical Science Magnet, Christina Dill. King Drew Medical Science Magnet, Joe Pantoja. Belmont High, Christian Morales. Belmont High, Jessica Pereira. And also, the teacher in the program is John Gerardo. And once again, we'd like to thank them all, and we're going to give each one of the students a certificate. I'll use Lorenzo Rocha as an example. We're going to go in the back, and hopefully you're willing to take a few pictures with some of us politicians, if you don't mind. And Lorenzo and the rest of the students, congratulations, and we wish you the best. Jad, you have any more comments?
We're proud of all of you.
And each one of the, each one of the council members received one of the outreach, outreach books that explains the program.
Madam President?
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I wanted to thank Councilmember Cardenas and Councilmember Perry, and congratulate Christian Morales and Jessica Pereira from Belmont. Way to go, guys, congratulations. It's a great program. I also wanted just to introduce to everybody, and I've got a few of the students right here on my left, but I wanted to introduce a group from Los Angeles City College that's here today. The Upward Brown Program, which is led today by Michael Lopez. It's a college continuation program, encouraging our young people to go to college, to stay in college. And if everybody from the Upward Brown Program will just stand up or wave, if they're still in the back, why don't you guys all stand up so we can recognize you. Congratulations, and thanks for coming to City Hall. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and welcome. At this time, members, I would like to introduce members of an organization, BOMA, the Building Owners and Maintenance Management Association, and they would like to make a present, special presentation to the city. If I can ask Mr. Richard Wells, who's chairman of BOMA, Chairman of the Board for BOMA of Greater LA, Mr. George Meyer, Chair of the BOMA Awards Committee, and Yasmina Raji, Director of Events and Communications. And members, if I could have quiet in the chambers, we're going to have a very special presentation. Mr. Wells?
Hi, my name is George Meyer, and I'm the Chair of the Awards Committee of the Building Owners and Managers Association. The Building Owners and Managers Association, or BOMA, sponsors the Office Building of the Year Award, or TOBE, contest each year. It is the most prestigious and comprehensive program of its kind in commercial real estate. It is the only competition in the Los Angeles metropolitan area that honors outstanding commercial and public office buildings and awards excellence in building management. All facets of a building's operations are thoroughly evaluated, including its amenities package, employee relations programs, community involvement, emergency evacuation procedures, building standards and accessibility, and overall service to its tenants and to the community. TOBE awards are presented in 13 categories, including historic building. To be eligible in the historic category, a building must be at least 50 years old with the original design maintained. The Los Angeles City Hall was the winner of the local BOMA Award after an onsite tour and presentation in August 2002, and we would like to present the local...
Greater L.A., Mr. George Meyer, Chair of the BOMA Awards Committee, and Yasmina Raji, Director of Events and Communications. And members, if I could have quiet in the chambers, we're going to have a very special presentation. Mr. Wells.
My name is George Meyer, and I'm the Chair of the Awards Committee of the Building Owners and Managers Association. The Building Owners and Managers Association, or BOMA, sponsors the Office Building of the Year Award, or TOBE, contest each year. It is the most prestigious and comprehensive program of its kind in commercial real estate. It is the only competition in the Los Angeles metropolitan area that honors outstanding commercial and public office buildings and awards excellence in building management. All facets of a building's operations are thoroughly evaluated, including its amenities package, employee relations programs, community involvement, emergency evacuation procedures, building standards and accessibility, and overall service to its tenants and to the community. TOBE awards are presented in 13 categories, including historic building. To be eligible in the historic category, a building must be at least 50 years old with the original design maintained. The Los Angeles City Hall was the winner of the local BOMA Award after an onsite tour and presentation in August 2002, and we would like to present the local award. Which is this. After winning at the local level, the Los Angeles City Hall team prepared an informative portfolio and subsequently won at the contest regional level in early 2003. Its portfolio binder scored an impressive 97 points out of 100, and I was just told that three of the judges gave it a perfect score. This is the top score of any building in any regional category, and we would like to present the regional award at this time, which is this one. But wait, there's more. After this big win, the building advanced to the International BOMA Contest, where it competed against the best of the best throughout the BOMA world. It came out on top when the international winners were announced this July at the BOMA International Convention in San Francisco. And here is the international award. Congratulations to the Council President Alex Padilla, Project Restore, Department of General Services, Legislative Chief Analyst, Board of Public Works, and the Bureau of Engineering. All citizens of the City of Los Angeles should be proud of their City Hall and the recognition it has received throughout the real estate industry. Thank you.
It's my pleasure now to introduce the individuals who are here from the city and from Project Restore to join us in this presentation. And don't forget, we presented three awards today, and I think it's really terrific, and we should all be very proud. From Project Restore today, we have our Chair, Nabe Youssef, a board member, Kathy Moret. The Department of General Services is represented by General Manager John Mukri, which we'll call forward in a while, also Assistant General Manager David Pascal. Ron's not here. I see Jerry Miller's here from the CLA's office, very important in this whole process of restoring this building to its present state. We have, is Valerie here, Board of Public Works? No? Okay. Anyway, and we have Gary Moore, Deputy City Engineer, with us. I would like to introduce John Mukri now to say a few words regarding the competition, and then hopefully our Council President Padilla will accept the award on behalf of your city.
Thank you, Ed. I just heard 50 years and older.
Yeah, that's right.
And you have to go through all these wickets. Well, I'm 50 years and older. I didn't think I'd pass. Anyways, a few years ago, we started an effort at City Hall, and as the Bureau of Engineering led the charge on this, we wanted to bring this building back to the grandeur it had when it was built in the 1920s. It was a tremendous effort and a very difficult effort. A lot of people are involved. I know Ron Deaton's not here. He actually led the charge and kept us all on track to bring us to where we are today. But there was never any intent that we would get any recognition. General Services is proud to be benchmarked in things like procurement reengineering. We're proud to be benchmarked now with alternative fuels, and we're really proud now to be benchmarked internationally for the preservation and restoration of a building of this magnitude. But this was a tremendous effort led by my Assistant General Manager, David Pascal. You heard that this is a competition, and it's an extremely difficult competition, requiring many, many hours of effort to put through all these books and pamphlets and be available to lead people on tours and to do other things. This could not have been done during normal working hours. This was done basically by my employees on their own. They wanted to compete here. Project Restore wanted to compete here. The Bureau of Engineering wanted to compete. From the Department of General Services, we have Carlos Potillo, Raul Macias, George Becker, Sam Alloway. We also have Bob Campbell, who's in the Construction Forces, and Tom Byler. We also have an individual from Project Restore, Kevin Jewe, who really spent a lot of time. He was our eyes and ears and really did a lot to help this happen. Kevin, are you here? And I know that this was, when I, in the submarine service, we call SSBNs, Saturdays, Sundays, and bunches of nights. And this was a Saturday, Sunday, and bunches of night evolution. So I really want to give my congratulations to my team and the thanks to BOMA to recognize the effort of these individuals. Thank you.
I'd like to call on the Chair of Project Restore, Nabe Youssef.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of Project Restore, I would really like to congratulate you, this big city family, our mayor, honorable City Council, and our great General Services Department, members and leadership in competing and winning on an international level against a lot of landmarks for this Building of the Year competition. This has been a great mission and a very honorable mission for Project Restore, and I want to really thank all the staff members that contributed to this, and also the leadership of Mr. Ron Deaton and our past Chair, Kathy Moret, and all of us being the big family reaching for such altitude. Thank you all.
Thank you, Nabe.
And I'll just quickly add just a big thank you. On behalf of the mayor, the city council, and the entire city family, thank you to all the hard work that everyone from Project Restore to the city departments put into making this building what it is and having earned the due recognition that it has. If anything, I think it's just another example of how Los Angeles is a model, not only locally, regionally, nationally, but internationally, a model being a very diverse community, embracing that diversity, and having a thriving society and economy from that. City Hall has a model of legislation and policy that sets an example for people from around the country and around the world to follow, and certainly when it comes to architecture, historic preservation, and historic significance, it too is serving as a model, and this award is a recognition of that. But it's only because of the work that many, many people have put into these initiatives. So thank you all very much, and we're thrilled to have this award.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla, and thank you particularly to BOMA for this recognition. Let me recognize at this time, Ms. Han, did you want, Ms. Han, did you want to comment?
Thank you. I just wanted to rise and congratulate Project Restore and all those involved in it, and certainly our wonderful city workers in General Services. When I think back on the debate that took place on whether or not to spend the money to rehabilitate and renovate and bring up to code this gorgeous building or tear it down, I am so thankful that the decision was made, that smart minds prevailed, and that to have torn down this beautiful city hall would have been such a terrible tragedy. And I'm very pleased that Project Restore had the vision, had the passion, and really convinced everyone that, in fact, we should spend the money, we should renovate and restore this absolutely beautiful building. And there is not one day that I don't walk into this building, no matter what I'm feeling, and no matter what kind of a day I've already had so far, no matter what's on the agenda, no matter which council member is against me on this particular day, it is the most really sobering feeling to walk into this building, and every time, it reminds me of why I'm here, it reminds me of the people that I am elected to represent, and it always makes me believe that indeed, this is the place where good government takes place. And I want to take this opportunity to just really thank General Services. You all, you do everything, and you do it right, except for the temperature in this building during the winter. But I was not going to say that. But other than that, but you have done such great work in my own district. My own San Pedro Municipal City Hall is a beautiful restored building. The Cabrillo Bath House is another testament to your extreme good work. You're going to be building a gymnasium for me in Wilmington, and yesterday, we inaugurated our own fire history museum. The General Services really worked hard and beautifully on to create yet another wonderful attraction for people in the San Pedro area. So my hat's off and extreme debt of gratitude to not only those of you in Project Restore, but those of you in General Services who really do an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. I wanted to second everything Janice said about this building. But I wasn't going to let it go away that fast. It truly is great, that Project Restore and Kathy Moret and Kathy Irish, you know, and Gil Lindsay, and all the history of those who participated in some form here have a chance to contribute to a greater form that will be here after us. You know, this building will be here in 100 years because of the work and the private engineers who helped our city Bureau of Engineering and also our General Services. So it's very proud. And I also, what I love about this building, members, is on the greatest badge of any law enforcement agency in the world, is the Los Angeles City Hall. And I just think that's so important, is a symbol of the people's building, and I'm so glad that it's here and stands here tall for all of us. I'm just very proud of our city hall. May it continue to be open. May Project Restore continue to expand from San Pedro to Van Nuys and throughout the city in restoring the great buildings of the people of Los Angeles. Thank you, and congratulations, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much. I think things have been covered more articulately than I can ever say by Janice Han and Tom Labange, but thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for all the great work that you've done to make this place truly a temple of democracy, and that you've done throughout this city to make sure that our heritage and our history is not forgotten by anyone. Just wanted to plant a little seed in your heads, too, that there's Barnesdale Park, which is one of the most incredible places, the Hollyhock House, one of our great, great assets. So we're looking forward to working very closely with you. You can be such a great frontline for us, especially as we go to the state and look at some of those historical funds that have helped at the Griffith Observatory. That can be one of our next projects. So thank you, congratulations, look forward to working with you.
Again, thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and thank you, BOMA, for this recognition, and thank you to the city workers who made it all happen. Thank you. At this time, let me recognize Councilmember Perry for an introduction.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I have a very special guest here today who has a special invitation for all those listening. This is Ms. Ecuador, and she's got something special to tell us.
Good morning, council members, ladies, gentlemen. My name's Christy Coelho. I'm Ms. Ecuador 2003 here in Los Angeles, and I just wanted to take this brief opportunity to welcome you to our parade on Sunday at 10:00 a.m., beginning on Olympic and Broadway. I know you have the Japanese parade to attend to somewhere in downtown, so hopefully you can drop us by also and check out the kiosks with delicious food and great culture, and it's just great to be here and see what you guys are doing for our city. Have a good day.
Thank you for that announcement, and thank you, Ms. Perry. Madam Clerk, I think we can call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labange, Ledlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villarreal, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, 14 members present in a quorum. Madam President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Misakowski moves. Mr. Reyes seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Labange seconds.
On the regular agenda, Ms. President, item number one is an item notice for public hearing. It's the Hollywood Entertainment Business Improvement District, and the city clerk has a report on the ballot tabulation.
Okay. I do have one card on item number one. Let's call that matter special.
On the regular agenda, also items noticed for public hearings, items two, three, and four are street lighting items, and council should open the hearing and continue the hearing ordinance, hearing and ordinance to September 5th.
Okay, colleagues, items two through four are now before us. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items today, so the public hearings are open, and without objection, continue to September 5th.
Next items, Mr. President, are items for which public hearings have been held, items five through 10. Item number nine, a report has been submitted and distributed to the council.
Okay. Colleagues, item five through 10 are now before us. Public hearings have been held in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Seeing no such motion, do we have any requests for specials? Item nine called special by Ms. Misakowski. Any other specials? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll and the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 11 through 28.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on items 11 through 28. We shall therefore deem the public hearings open and closed. Are there any requests for specials? 27 called special by Mr. Garcetti. Any other specials? Items 11 through 28. Any other specials? 28 called special by Mr. Garcetti. Any other specials? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll and the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
On the continued agenda, item number 29 is an item for, notice for public hearing, and a committee report has been distributed to the council members.
Okay. Colleagues, I do not have cards on item number 29. Let's deem the public hearings open and closed. Mr. Weiss?
If we could hold this on the desk, Mr. President.
Item 29 called special by Mr. Weiss.
And the next items, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have been held, items 30 and 31.
Okay. Colleagues, items 30 and 31 before us. Any specials? Any requests for specials? Items 30, 31. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Going back to the items called special, item number one was called special for a card from the public and also the city clerk for an announcement of ballot tabulation.
Okay. I do have one card from a Joel Fisher who says he only needs to speak. If there are others testifying against the bid renewal, and I see a wave of the hand saying testimony is not necessary, this concludes public comment on this item. Let's hear from our clerk.
The yes votes were 84.02 percent. The no votes, 15.99 percent. The council can now move forward if it chooses to adopt the ordinance implementing the Hollywood Entertainment Business Improvement District.
Thank you very much, colleagues. Are there any questions, any discussion? Seeing none. Let's open the roll on item number one. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Ms. President, item number nine was called special by Councilmember Misakowski.
Ms. Misakowski.
Can we have the ethics staff or city attorney up here?
As they come forward, Madam Clerk, can we send item number one forthwith, please?
And could we have a presentation of the communication or recommendation?
I just have an ask for a presentation of the latest report as it's being presented
Councilmembers, Deputy City Attorney Renee Stottle. The ordinance before you incorporates the changes made in the Rules and Elections Committee on Wednesday. Those changes include making the recusal and the new disclosure provisions and recusal provisions only applicable to committees, city committees, that an elected official may have. So therefore, if an elected, an elective city So therefore, if an elected, an elected city official is running for state office, those committees are not included. The contributions, the fundraising, et cetera, are not included within those provisions. In addition, we've added an operative date to the entire ordinance so that it's January 1st, 2004 was previously, two of the sections had a 2000, or January, July 1st, 2003 date in it. Since that date has gone by and additional time was needed for implementation, we've changed that to July, or January 1st, 2004. And additionally, there was some concern about, in the fundraising provisions of the ordinance, how attribution of contributions would be made between lobbyists when originally the ordinance provided for the entire amount of the fundraising, the contributions made as a result of fundraising to be attributed to the lobbyists. Now it is divide, it would be divided based on the responsibility for those contributions. Those were the changes made by the Rules Committee, and those changes are reflected in these ordinance, this ordinance.
Thank you. Members, I think that those around the table have looked at this, and as a former member of Rules Committee, I had had this presentation earlier and generally supported the ordinance. Subsequent to that time, I have been receiving a lot of information, and particularly I was, in fact, as we sent it back, as I recall, the real issue we sent it back was the question of if this would have applied to the mayor, that is, the issue of recusal, if it does apply to the mayor, did we have a mechanism to have sort of an alternate or substitute mayor? And the city attorney did indicate that, yes, in our mechanism today, there is this entity called the Board of Refused Powers, which can sit and does sit in place. Right now, it's rather extreme that it's ever called into place because of existing conflicts as they apply either by our own rules or state rules. But what concerned me as I looked at this, and although the city attorney did come up with the Board of Refused Powers, as one looked at the number of times in the past where Board of Refused Powers in the city's history had been a five-member board acting as the mayor, it was really, really rare. And we didn't normally, or don't normally, have the Board of Refused Powers becoming an executive entity. And so I was convinced, I think, by the, by those who were representing the mayor, who said, this is not consistent with the new charter that we just enacted. The new charter, which, for those of us who were aware of how the city was governed under the old charter, had been known as a reasonably weak mayor system. And one of the things that our charter commissions, both charter commissions, both citizens' charters' commissions indicated is that we should strengthen the office of the mayor, we should strengthen the executive. And as many of you know, from time to time around here, we don't often, we don't agree with the mayor, but that's all right. We have our process, we have the system, we have it in place to say we have a mayor who has the ability to do things, but we have the ability as a council to countermand that in our body as the charter has now set forth. So I was persuaded that I, and was indicating that I was going to bring in a resolution today, a motion to say, take the mayor out of the recusal section of this ordinance. And then I started to look at it again. And what many of you may not be aware, on this issue of disclosure and recusal, as it affected all elected officials, there had been an original proposal by the Ethics Commission that said those recusal, those thresholds should be set for any controlled committee where any fundraising is done, and that would have included and did include originally, the only time that I'm aware as fundraisers, that we are able to raise money with unlimited amounts. And those were what we just went through recently, the issue of secession in a city. We weren't limited to a $500 contribution level or a $1,000 contribution level. There were significant contributions that many members of this council and the mayor went out and achieved and to help fight the fight, raise the battle, and campaign, let wages strong campaign to keep this city together. That issue, that issue where we were able to raise larger money, where we did do raise larger money for the issues of park bonds, Prop K, for Prop F to build fire stations, for Prop Q to build police stations, that was then dropped out of the proposed ordinance. And it struck me that as I looked at what was left, it literally was, in one instance, that recusal would affect only this body. And I believe that at this point, what we ought to do instead, and my motion is going to be to remove from this ordinance all of the provisions relating to recusal of all elected officials, but instead require and leave in there the disclosure. And measure, and members, I believe that over the next two years, we are in an election cycle in this city, having just begun for the mayor's reelection, a two-year window in which the mayor and citywide elected officials can raise money. Many of you will be eligible for reelection cycle that will begin, I believe, in October in raising money. What better than for this next two-year period to have disclosure out there, to look back at it two years hence and say, what did disclosure tell us? Should we now, based on real information under this term, moving the ball forward, putting disclosure out there as votes are taken? Does that then lead us with a body of knowledge, a body of information that two years hence we should change? And I believe it's better to approach it that way with real information, not trying to piecemeal back information, back questions, but look forward, put disclosure in this ordinance as it is, take the recusal sections out, and then see where we are two years from now as we evaluate it. So that is my motion. It's been distributed already, item 9A, and I would ask for an aye vote on the elimination of that recusal issue, and I will push my button again, but I think it's worthwhile to hear the debate around the council.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski. Mr. Padilla.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, for those of you who are new to the council and began your service on July 1st, this still isn't new to you. I'm sure this is an issue that you've been following, that you've been tracking, that you've been hearing about. And for the members of the council who have been on the council for a couple of years now, you'll know that this isn't just a recent package of proposals or recommendations from the Ethics Commission, but it's a package that we've been considering for some time and taking very deliberative consideration of it in committee. It's come to the council, we sent it back to committee for further review, and it's now back before us. And I'm sure we're going to get packages of recommendations or proposals from the Ethics Commission in the future. I want to recall your attention to just one thing. For the members of the council who are not on the Rules Committee, I hope, I really hope you not only received, but that you saw a letter that I sent to you about a week, week and a half ago advising you of the committee meeting that we were going to have, that it was going to appear on the agenda, and that that committee was an opportunity, if not the opportunity, to come, come up to speed, ask for questions, get them answered, and really begin to understand this. And I say that because I've been asked already this morning, are we going to go through this committee report, item by item, recommendation by recommendation, as we have with previous ethics proposals? I'm certainly prepared to do that. If necessary, I think we'd all invest the time to do that. But I hope that between committee, personal briefings, and reading the materials themselves, there's enough of an understanding of what's before us to be able to act on this more expeditiously. I want to thank the, in your presentation, Leanne, and Ms. Misakowski for pointing out the differences between what's before us today and what the previous versions were. The proposals or the recommendations before us have been amended by the committee just on Wednesday to apply only to city offices and would not apply to non-city offices. It's one thing when you're running for council, or you're a council member running for reelection, or even some of us who may choose to run for comptroller, city attorney, or mayor. But it's a different ballgame if our mayor chose to run for governor, for example, in creating unlevel playing fields at different levels of government, number one. Number two, the date of effectiveness issue. Technical amendment, July 1st of this year is obviously behind us, so we're looking at January 1st of next year. I think one of the big topics of concern and of discussion, and Mr. Chair will last for a little bit more than three minutes, because I do want to make a few points. One of the big topics of conversation, both in committee, here, and behind the scenes, has been the difference between recusal and disclosure, which I think is a very significant difference. When it comes to disclosure, most people don't have any problem with that. It's just disclosing information. It's reporting, it's making information available to one another and to the public. To the point where a rule would require or call for recusal, we have a very significant question to ask and various considerations to balance. Recusal is very significant. On the one hand, are we implying a conflict of interest here, an inability to withstand certain pressures, certain forces? And probably most importantly, an act of recusal is an act of foregoing voluntarily or be it required of our governance responsibilities for any member of this city council, or any elected official for that matter. But for any member of this council to recuse themselves on this item means that the 250,000 people that we represent are no longer represented in that decision. And I think that's a very, very significant point to consider and a very serious question to ask ourselves. Conversation took place in committee about the difference between the mayor having to recuse himself versus disclose and a council member having to review, excuse me, to recuse themselves versus disclose. Yes, there's two branches of government. Yes, there are 15 members of the council and only one mayor. But I do believe that for that individual member and for that individual district, a recusal is being put on the sidelines. A recusal is being left out of the decision-making process, the legislative process. The bottom line with this set of rules and the rules that have come before and the rules that will undoubtedly come in the future, the question about how can we regulate, what rules can we put in place to try to maintain, is it really the ethics and the integrity of the elected officials and the decision-making process of this city? Or is it merely, as we discussed in committee, addressing the concern of a perception of impropriety, a perception or misperception about influence and lobbying? That, too, is a very significant question and cuts to the core of these issues. My personal opinion, and I've said it before, I like to paraphrase Councilmember Parks, who has said, "No number of rules and regulations can substitute for ethics and integrity of an individual." Number one. Number two, what I've seen in practice, both in office and in, prior to being elected to office, is the more complex we make the rules and regulations, the more complex we will see the people who seek to work around them become.
Mr. Padilla, please just press your button again. There's everybody else in line, but if I just press it again.
Okay.
Thanks.
And in addition to that, what we're doing by making the rules and the standards more and more complex, we're making it tougher on people who do play by the rules. And I suggest that we all play by the rules, but when it comes to the issues of abiding by the rules and being in compliance and fulfilling the disclosure, et cetera, et cetera, and the reports that we're required to do by law, at the end of the day, that takes time, that takes resources, that takes time and resources that we're either spending doing this or spending addressing public safety issues, tending to our district's concerns, deliberating policy in this council, et cetera. So I do have some concerns when it comes to the capacity of the commission to enforce the laws, when it comes to the burden on the elected officials to comply with the law. What have we really achieved in practice and in application of several of our proposals? So I think I will come to a close soon, but would gladly push my button to speak again to address some other issues, answer your questions, possibly the same, possibly different than the commission staff and the city attorney staff that are sitting before us. But nonetheless, just for clarification, point to the elements of the report that do exempt the ballot measures and charitable fundraising from the limits, from the guidelines that are being proposed today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members, I wanted to rise in support of this amendment, and I particularly want to thank members of the committee and Council President Padilla for your remarks just now in terms of the deliberation that the committee's gone through. And I also want to take a moment just to thank the members of the council for allowing those of us who just got to the council an opportunity to actually dig in, read the ordinance, look at the information that's being presented here, and come to a, I think, a decision that's one that we can be comfortable with. I know that some of us have referred on occasion to being attacked in the media for this and that, and I know the comments that did come out, that we didn't want to get in and deal with this. That was far from the case. In fact, it's given us a good period of time to look at this information, study it, and come up with a decision that I think is sound. I don't want to repeat anything that Mr. Padilla has mentioned, but I do want to, you know, again, acknowledge that there are significant issues that we're all trying to address here, and I think the ability for us to vote today on this item is essential. We should move forward quickly and make sure that people in the city of Los Angeles see that this council does in fact have the will and the desire to look at issues of ethics in great detail with great concern and great care. And so I wanted to rise in support of this amendment, and again, thank the members of the council for allowing us a decent period of time to begin to look at this issue in much more detail, and I'm comfortable with the amendment that Member Misakowski has brought forward.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Ludlow. Councilwoman Grohl.
Yeah, I want, thank you. Just have a couple of questions, but also colleagues, and understand the points that Mr. Padilla has made, and I have a better appreciation of my first Rules Committee yesterday, that what you and Cindy primarily had to go through over the last couple of years. It's not easy, it's complicated and difficult, and I understand that. But change is difficult when we have to do things in a different manner than we have in the past. Just want to point out to you, colleagues, that there are, there are ways in which you can prevent yourself from having to recuse. You don't take more than, in our instance, than the $14,999. Number two, you don't get lobbied from those 189 lobbyists that we have. And thirdly, you can give the money back. So I want to make it clear that there are opportunities where you don't have to be disenfranchised and where you don't have to recuse yourself. There are options, and that's how this ordinance has been drafted. There have been some changes relative to the questions, I think, Mr. Padilla and Mr. Sainz and I had yesterday, relative to host committee, which have been included in the new version. I think the other item was relative to the city-controlled and non-city-controlled committees. And for, if we're talking about disclosure today, I would recommend that we look at any non-city-controlled committees also be under, considered under that disclosure, Ms. Misakowski. Then the other question I have, Ms. Misakowski, on your motion is relative to the, and can hold my time if we can, colleagues, for this one, on her motion says, "by city officials." Are most of the, this disclosure is by the lobbyists, though, is that correct? So would that, could you just explain that and make sure that the motion?
Yeah, and when you're done, can it? Two, two things. One, I have a question as well as to the disclosure. This ordinance provides for disclosure right now as, for the lobbyists, and it, as written, provides for recusal by elected officials. I'm not sure if I completely understand the motion, because I, as I originally understood the motion, it was to provide for disclosure by the elected official in place of recusal. Is that correct?
So I guess the question then to you all, does that require then the lobbyist to report their fundraising as well? Would that be covered, because it's just the city officials?
Yeah, the current law requires lobbyists and lobbying, registered lobbying entities to disclose what they raise, deliver, or act as intermediary for. And this proposal, but for the non-city committees, would also require disclosure of fundraising.
So that would be consistent?
So that would be, that is, the lobbyists would continue to have disclosure requirements, as I understand Councilmember, Councilmember Misakowski's motion.
And then, and I'll have a question, I think, for Mr. Padilla, how this works into the political consultants issue, again, that may be as we go forward on those items. But colleagues, I know there's been a lot of discussion about this today and concern, et cetera, but I want to be clear from my position, which is that it, I do believe that there are simple ways in which to address this and still be able to make sure that the public feels confident that we're not unduly influenced by lobbyists or others, that under the recusal, again, that there are three options. You can not be lobbied, you cannot accept their money, and thirdly, you can also return the money if it goes over that addition, or that, excuse me, that threshold. That this is something that has been, again, discussed, been to council, went back to committee on two or three specific issues, not necessarily on the issues we have before us today. And so I continue to stand by my, my previous vote, which is to support the commission's decisions with some of the changes that I know, again, Mr. Padilla will make as we go forward on this item, but would stand in support of the commission's recommendations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Uh, next, Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I also rise in support of Ms. Missakowski's motion. And I, I think what I've had a concern on many of the issues that have come forward from ethics since I've been here is that, number one, the complication that people with great intentions can be tripped up by rules because you almost have to have a lawyer with you to know who to speak to and what to read and, and no one can keep track of that. The other issue is, I think, we have relied too heavily on rules that we think make people honest. People are either honest or dishonest, and I could accept no money and be in a conflict of interest. It's my judgment of whether I should recuse myself or not. I can collect $14,999.98 and be honest. On the other hand, I can collect no money and be dishonest. I think we can't take the human factor out of these issues. And no matter how many rules that we create, we cannot make people honest that are dishonest. And so I think we have to have reporting. I think it's more than appropriate. People should know. But in the final analysis, it's up to the judgment of those who are making decisions to decide when they have tipped that scale as to conflict of interest or non-conflict of interest. And I think no matter how big the book gets, all we can create, in my judgment, are violations against people who may have good intentions but make bad decisions. And we may never catch those who are truly corrupt. And so I, I believe that the more simplistic that we can make the rules, the more that people have an understanding, the more that ethics can work with people to help them stay out of trouble rather than keeping rules that create additional hurdles, the better we'll all be. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Uh, Ms. Missakowski.
Uh, members, I just wanted to clarify that this disclosure doesn't just leave a status quo where lobbyists would disclose, but adds, raises the level that we now are also obligated to disclose at the point when we are being lobbied by someone who is, through the cumulative contributions, raised money for us at the level that it's set. So it does put disclosure out there, puts clarity out there. And as I say, I really think it would be, that, I would like to add that there be a request that, that two years from the, then we, when we complete the next election cycle in, in 2005, that the Ethics Commission come back to us with this cumulative total of report of how often was there disclosure, what kind of amounts were raised under these limits, to see whether or not we are then, with a body of knowledge, wanting to take or look at another step. But I think that this does raise the bar. Disclosure is already out there by lobbyists in general in terms of their, how much they raise every quarter. I think it's a quarterly, um, report they have to make. And this would add raising that bar, and then it's a discussion thereafter as to whether, if, or how we need to take the next step or another step. But I think that it is fair. It is also interesting to, to note that, um, when this ordinance came forward, at one point, the thresholds were raised because we thought that those thresholds would not be reached on recusal. And again, I don't, I think we should just be straightforward with it. Let's have disclosure out there. Uh, let's, let everybody be informed. And at that point, two years hence, just as we did recently. I, I think, uh, members who are new here may not have been aware of the very, very vigorous debate we had on independent expenditures and the true campaign financing reform that I very strongly supported, put forward by the Ethics Commission. Again, we were not ultimately successful in, in, in passing that. But each time we do discuss these, we bring it farther, we, um, make our own very significant ethics and campaign finance reforms just that much better and that much in the forefront of what's going on in the country. So I believe we will be doing the same here and ask for your support on 9A.
If I, if I may ask a question, uh, Councilmember Missakowski, I just wanted to clar- make sure I understand and clarify again that the provisions in the ordinance, the circumstances under which recusal would have occurred under this ordinance, you would now replace that with disclosure for the elected official?
Yes.
There's also another provision in this ordinance that talks about return of contribution which was essential to recusal. Would it be your intent to take that provision?
Yeah, I, I think that, that is then not applicable.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Padilla, for a second time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, colleagues, just, you know, for the record, to be formal about it, I do want to move the committee report, uh, that is before us from just the last Wednesday's committee meeting with the recommendations that it includes. And I do support, uh, the amending motion brought in by Councilmember Missakowski. So we'll vote for the motion first, that'll amend the committee report, and then we vote on the committee report as amended, assuming that goes through. On this point, I want to thank Ms. Grue for reminding us and really calling to our attention the three options that you would have, uh, if you hit any of these threshold levels or hit any of these scenarios. You do have the option of returning money. We have that option all the time. We have that option at any time. I know, for example, uh, in my various campaigns, I have taken money from tobacco companies. There's been attempts, you know, the checks have come in the mail, but we return those contributions. So you don't need, uh, a rule to allow you to do that, but that is one of your options. Uh, you can also not be lobbied and choose not to meet with those entities, those lobbying, uh, individuals or employers, and therefore avoid the situation of having taken contribution and having been lobbied. So just wanted to thank her for that. Finally, Ms. Grue asked me to speak just a minute to the element of this proposal that speaks to the business relationships. Ms. Grue. Ms. Grue. Ms. Grue. You actually speak to the business relationships element of the package proposal, uh, before us. That specifically speaks to the concern that some people have where an individual may be a political consultant or in some way involved in your campaign formally on a pay basis or providing in-kind services, and then soon after the election or within a few months, come and lobby, uh, one of us on an issue. So, uh, one of the rules that, uh, included in this proposal would also call for a recusal under those scenarios. And the options in that case is to not return your contribution is you can choose not to meet with them or recuse yourself on one of those items to go to the next level. And again, I hate to get so in touch detailed here, but it is a complex issue. The other example that we discussed in committee was one where, let's say, the, uh, elections attorney or the campaign attorney that you have as part of your campaign, does that just recuse them or does that recuse everybody in their firm or in the entity that they work for? And maybe, uh, Ms. Pell, I'll give you a couple of minutes to try to explain that element, give the examples that we discussed in committee and, uh, the firewall, the, the recommendation here to pursue some sort of firewall scenario that can accommodate those situations.
Well, um, in brief, the, the proposal is that the commission has put forward would, um, include, uh, somebody, an entity that is a registered lobbying firm, meaning that they have at least one person in-house who is qualified as a registered lobbyist. Uh, that if that lobbying firm had a, what we call a business relationship with an elected official, meaning that they received more than $1,000 in compensation as a firm to represent that, um, that official's interests or explain political campaign law or do campaign strategy, for example, with that official. And then other members of that firm came and then lobbied that official, um, that would cause recusal under the commission's proposal. Uh, we, uh, had recommended that because of the concern that obviously if it's tailored only to individual lobbyists, one easy way to get around that requirement would be to simply have others from your firm do your lobbying. Uh, I, I do want to clarify that the requirement would apply only, um, again, for firms that are lobbying firms. So for example, if it's a lobbying firm that represents an elected official and, uh, they have, you know, six in-house lobbyists, and it might be a firm of 400 people. It might be a firm of five people. It might be a firm of six people. Uh, those would be situations in which recusal would be triggered because of the financial relationship that exists with that firm. The issue of a firewall was discussed in the committee, uh, and that was a recommendation or a suggestion that was offered by the mayor's office to perhaps wall off the, uh, attorney who is providing campaign consulting services or, or political law services to an elected official from those who are lobbyists. I'm happy to let the committee members speak about their views on that proposal. Our, the commission's recommendation on that was that, uh, it doesn't, and after talking with the city attorney's office about it as well, it's not a recommendation that would make a meaningful difference in our view. Uh, we're happy to take a look at it further if that's, uh, something the council would like to hear more about. But in our view, setting a firewall in this instance isn't really addressing the problem.
Mr. Garcetti. Thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, thank you, colleagues, for part of this debate. I, I, I recognize where we're headed today. Um, for what it's worth, I think that recusal does have merit, and, um, I'll be voting as such. But in, in a conversation I had yesterday, I do think that it's only fair that if we have $15,000 limits for the city council members, that we move, uh, the mayor's limits up to reflect, you know, a sense that he can raise double per, uh, contribution and add a little extra because he's a citywide official, maybe of 35,000. I'd like to move an amendment that the cap for the mayor would be 35,000. Um, that said, I think there's been a good discussion. Mr. Ludlow in particular had a good idea about looking at things from how the, the MTA does it right now. And I spoke to Ms. Pell about this, in which, and I think Mr. Parks's, uh, comments addressed this too. How can we do this in a way that's proactive so that when we sit down, maybe there, there is a mechanism in which Ethics Commission or, or some entity can tell us, these are the folks that you should recuse yourself from, or these are folks that you may have a conflict with. So that would be something to move forward in the future. So it's not just up to us to trip up. It's also up to the entity to let us know, um, where, because I think as we get in office, we get so many checks. You monitor them. You turn down the ones you don't like, but you always, you don't know everybody's friends of friends. And it's often good to know what their connections are when they have business before us. And even as part of disclosure, that would be useful, um, to us, to look at that sort of mechanism. So thank you, Mr. Ludlow, for that thinking, and I think that's something we can chew through, um, in the short future, in the near future. But in the meantime, you know, it is my philosophy that, that the recusal does have merit, that, um, these are limits where, you know, over which we shouldn't really be raising that much from a single source that's also lobbying us. I just feel that very strongly, and I'll be voting on that today. But I, I do understand, um, that oftentimes we're putting these things up as places to trip rather than, um, uh, people being able to hold our hand along the way a little bit and say, "This is a way to avoid," rather than just, uh, the punitive. So, uh, I think that's probably the roadmap of where we can go, um, in the next few weeks, hopefully the next couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Chair recognizes Mr. Laban.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, Ms. Pell, I want to ask a question. In my memory, I'm trying to go back, you know, all the years. Uh, the only recusal that I could recall on an issue here with the mayor of Los Angeles is when they were discussing a arena at the convention center. And the mayor, at the time, Mr. Rizal Property, Ninth and Figueroa, and he couldn't participate in that. Is that correct?
Uh, my recollection is the same as yours. I believe that there was a recusal regarding the pantry and its proximity to the arena.
Now, was there any others, no, that I want to ask?
That might be something the city attorney's office can help with, since the only recusal right now ties to financial interests of the office holder. And that's something the city attorney's office advises on.
But I mean, but no, I want to ask the Ethics Commission, because you're looking at all this. I want to ask the Ethics Commission, because you're bringing light to this and saying, "This is something that we should do." But, um, so looking back, you study what may have taken place 10, 20, 30, 40 years ago on that. That's the thing that I'm concerned about, because I want, and as I said before on a number of occasions, that public disclosure is extremely important, uh, for anything that we do in this business here. But I would like to see, is there any other example, you know, that you would know of? That's the only one that I could think of, that a public official had to step away. What caused it is when a previous mayor was on a board of directors, I believe of a bank, that had to do with some, uh, land use decision was made, et cetera. That's the only two that I could think of. Does anybody remember anymore?
I, I, I looked back into the records of the city attorney opinions that had been issued under Charter Section 222 and the prior Section 281. And in terms of a mayor, only, I'm only talking about the mayor, um, there are eight occasions where, where the city attorney's office issued an opinion, um, to the mayor advising, um, transferring the matter to the Board of Refund Powers. The first instance was in 1973 relating to a contract. Um, in 1989, 1990, it were those two matters that you, um, mentioned. It was discipline matters relating to the treasurer. Those matters were transferred to the Board of Refund Powers.
Discipline affairs, county employees?
Relating to the treasurer.
Oh, to the treasurer, or the city clerk?
The treasurer.
The treasurer, okay.
Yeah. And then the more recent examples are with the, um, Mayor Riordan in the pantry.
Do we know any of, uh, any related to council at all?
Um, I can't, I didn't research that. I'm sure that it's happened before, but I didn't research that.
Okay. The other thing I, I would want to say, if I would want to make one suggestion. Uh, in addition to whatever we vote on today, I would love to see, anybody go over by where the bridge is? You see, there's an Asper pad. You know what Asper pad is? It's a computer touchscreen that gives you city hall information. Anybody ever see that here? You see that here? I want the Ethics Commission to have an Asper. I was going to say Ben, because that was the first, uh, ethics director, but I don't want to ask for Leanne or Asper whomever. It's got you right to the Ethics Commission on this third floor of whatever anyone wants to find out on issues related to those who contribute to elected officials of the City of Los Angeles. I think that would be real important to have on the ground level of the public entrance to this building. I was at the Board of Supervisors recently, and there's a little reminder similar to what our fire inspectors post at the buildings as far as occupancies on ethics as you walk in there. I just would like to ask, whatever we do, a friendly amendment, that there be some public information, computer touchstone screen that would plug you in so people, if they had questions, they could go to it. So we would encourage people to look at, because I want all the light on it. I want all the light and the information on it, because I think that information is what the people want, what I certainly want, and then go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Laban.
That's a friendly second amendment by Dennis Han.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. And I think the Ethics Commission can take that.
Ask for Tom. Now, we're going to, ask for Tom. Now, I'm just going to, and Tom Bradley. Okay, okay. Now, ask for whoever you want to ask for. Ask for whoever you want to ask for. But there should be some touchstone computer screen there by where Molly Wong used to sit, by the CAO's desk on the bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Laban, and I think the commission can take that into the advisement. I see, uh, Ms. Pell nodding her head already. Mr. Weiss.
I'm over here masquerading as Dennis Zine. I hope that doesn't scare anybody. Um, question, question, and I don't know if it's for, uh, you folks at the table or for Ms. Missakowski. In terms of the, uh, if you, if we pass 9A, what is the nature of the disclosure? Is there a form for elected officials? Is there a, is it a once-a-year form, just like a million other forms? Is that really spelled out in the ordinance already? Is that something we should discuss now? What can you tell me about that, Ms. Padilla?
Uh, if, if it's the desire to change the recusal, uh, sections into a disclosure section, there is a provision in the current ordinance that talks about recusal notification that could be...
You should tell me which, which number is that?
Um, it's Section 26 of the ordinance. It's on page 13, 49, Section 49.5.18.1. And it would have required elected officials to notify within two days of the recusal, um, of taking an, um...
So in, in other words, what you could...
We could transform that into a disclosure section.
You could modify this. I'm just, tell me if this is a sensible way of doing business or not. You could create a form, because that's really what you're talking about, is you're creating a form that, whether it's accessed on the web or you send them around to people's offices or whatever, that whenever one of these monetary thresholds is reached, it's a $25,000 threshold, $15,000 threshold, within a calendar year, at that point, the elected official could or should or must fill in that form and file it. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, I think that's what we're talking about. There's a, the other provision, um, that the, the lobbyists or contractors would be filing to, to let you know that the threshold has been met. But then once, um, I believe the way you could craft this, if this is the council's desire to provide for disclosure within two business days of taking an action on a matter that would have had that threshold triggered.
And I guess, and I guess what, that's the reason I asked the question, Ms. Adele, which is that, um, I think it's in the interests of everybody, the city, everyone who does business with the city, the council, city government, to not get into an area where inadvertence can occur. inadvertence can occur, and if it's a form, there are other forms that we get, we get the quarterly this and the quarterly that. If it's simply a form, then it's easier for people to fill out, rather than having to ask yourself, "Well, am I making a decision or not?" So I guess that would be my suggestion as you redraft it, to just make it more of a ministerial form than something that, you know, could lead to inadvertence in terms of someone's failure to comply.
Question, the, and there needs to be some trigger that would need to occur for the filing of that form, so we would need to decide what that would be, if it's not taking an action.
You know what? It's easier for me to see the words on the page--
Right.
--than to have this conversation. So I think if we approve 9A, we're inevitably going to need to ask you to redraft and give us the opportunity to review it, and so maybe in that context, we can have that discussion. Does that, does that make sense?
Sure.
That sounds fair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I believe the first vote is on the amending motion.
Mr. President, there was a Garcetti motion. There was no second, and that was to change the mayor's limit to $35,000.
Mr. Garcetti, clarification on your motion, please? Okay, Mr. Garcetti, you mind?
Of course.
Mr. Garcetti?
Yeah.
Mr. Garcetti, you might say it into the microphone, please?
Yeah.
So that everybody can hear, because there's other people wondering.
To restate, and there's been a couple of seconds, to raise it up to 35, because there's a higher amount that citywide officials can raise, so it seems only fair. If we're talking about numbers of people that can influence somebody, or numbers of people, it's the same number, more or less, of people in direct proportion.
And this is for the mayor or for all citywide officials? For all citywide officials?
Point of information, is that raising of the limit tied to the original that is before us, or Councilwoman Mosikowski's--
Janice, I think it, if it's raised, it's just raised, and then we could look at whether it's disclosure and/or recusal. So I think the raise is fine.
Okay.
There was a, there was a second to that. Let's open the roll on the Garcetti amending motion.
Point of information, clerk, my friendly emotion is that--
Since it was, since it was friendly--
Yeah, but I mean, it's accepted. I mean, it's going to make--
Yes, Mr. Laban, and I acknowledge concurrence or agreement by Ms. Pellum when you were done speaking. So colleagues, the roll is open on the Garcetti amending motion. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, one no.
That is approved.
And next would be motion 9A, Mosikowski, the other goes.
Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, two no.
That is approved. We now have the committee report as amended.
Amendment that Ms. Grue verbally made, which is to restore back something that was taken out, which is a basic disclosure requirement for lobbyists as it relates to other controlled committees.
But I don't think this--
Unless you add it in my note. There was something that was dropped out, I think, again, on a disclosure principle, we're going to back in with other committees related, other than the ones that are just the basic, our own campaign committees.
Ms. Pellum, clarification? My understanding is that the proposal before, did that affect the laws that are already on the books?
No, that's correct. My understanding is that the laws didn't affect what's in place. I think the question that Councilmember Mosikowski is raising is, as to the fundraising disclosure, which is now part of this, will that disclosure apply to all committees, since it is simply disclosure, or will it be narrowed, as the committee wished, to only include city committees?
Okay, so the question is city versus non-city committees?
Is whether, if in the interest of full disclosure, is it the council's desire to have this disclosure requirement apply to any controlled committees?
Okay, so colleagues, as is currently in the committee report, the rules worth adopting or about to adopt apply only to committees for city offices, for city offices. So Ms. Grue has a motion to have it applies to all offices that any city official may be running for. Is there a second? Ms. Mosikowski, second. Okay, is everybody clear on this? A yes vote on the Grue motion would have these rules apply to any and all campaign committees, regardless if it's a city office or a non-city office, still with the exception of ballot measures. Mr. Weiss?
Point of clarification, Ms. Grue, if I, I guess now what I don't understand is, we voted to change the citywide disclosure limit from $25,000 to $35,000 on a theory that was articulated by Mr. Garcetti, that thirteen of us agreed with, that was, when people run for citywide offices, the disclosure, the contribution limits are doubled, they are for council, and the races tend to cost more, a million dollars or whatever for citywide. So your proposal is disclosure at a certain threshold, or what? It's the same--
Mr. Weiss, let me, let me try to explain once again. The rules that we agreed to, and we're up until this point, according to the committee report, shall apply for candidates seeking election, reelection to city offices. So you as a council member running for reelection, or if you as a council member chose to run for one of the citywide offices, those rules would apply. The committee recommends that the rules not apply should a city official choose to run for a state office, or a federal office, or a county office. Ms. Grue's motion is to have the rules apply to any office a city official could be running for, be it a state, federal, or office in another jurisdiction.
Right, and my question is, what are the numbers that apply?
Well, we've already voted on the numbers.
And that's, that's what I wanted to clarify.
We've already voted on the numbers. So a yes vote has these rules apply across the board, a no vote supposes the committee report to have the rules apply only to city offices. Is that clear?
We're talking.
The committee voted--
To have these rules apply only for city offices.
So that was the, so that was the committee action, this is a motion to overturn what the committee did?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And a yes supports full disclosure.
Are we ready for a vote, colleagues? Are we ready for a vote? Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, seven noes.
Okay, that motion does not pass. We now have the committee report as amended, and the attached ordinance. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved.
And the city attorney will be drafting a new ordinance that will be coming to court council.
Anticipate that next Friday.
Okay. Friday.
Next item, please.
Item number 27 was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti, item 27.
Yes, just a technical amendment, if I can add to item 27, under moving clause, upon the sale of the surplus property and receipt by the city of said sale proceeds. And I'll give that to the city attorney, and discuss with the city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Colleagues, technical amendment to item 27. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, let's consider item 27 as amended. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 28 called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti, item 28.
Thank you very much. This is Mr. Laban's motion, but I was happy to join with him to celebrate a community activist, Mo Montanez, who has been a real leader up in North Atwater Village, and we're changing the name of a part of the park up there to reflect his great advocacy activism over the years. North Atwater Village, northeast Los Angeles, part of our great city, and I want to thank Mr. Laban for his leadership on that. I know the residents of Atwater Village are very excited about this, and it was a great way to honor a great man, and we thank you very much, Mo, for all that you've done, as well for the community.
Mr. Laban.
Yeah, thank you, Eric. I want to thank your deputy, Jim Almahan, who did a great job leading. This is right on the border of our district, in the area of the Atwater Village, River Glen area, North Atwater Park, and this gentleman, I've had calls from people who really were totally in love with the energy that he provided to that community in North Atwater. So we're asking our Commission on Recreation and Parks to consider naming this in honor of Richard Mo Montanez, who is very deserving of this ballfield naming. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. The matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That matter is approved.
Next item, Madam President, item number 29 called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss?
Mr. Weiss.
Item 29.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, this is an item that arose from an ATC decision in my district. It was considered in Mr. Reyes's committee earlier this week, and there have been a number of discussions between members of the community and the applicant here, and what I will propose is that we deny the appeal and adopt 15 conditions, in addition to the commissions imposed by the zoning administrator. These 15 conditions should be attached and circulated to all of you. It is a very difficult part of our city to work in, because La Brea is so extraordinarily busy, and it has extraordinary spillover effects on the surrounding community. But I do need to consider everyone who lives in that area, and I do believe that this package of conditions of approval will substantially benefit a broad number of people who live there that we have not heard from, and so I ask for your support. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Wait, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Weiss if he was going to adopt the findings.
All right, so we have the amendments attached, as Mr. Weiss has indicated, along with the findings. Ah, I'm sorry, all right. I didn't see a card submitted on item 29. I believe it's an appeal. This is probably a required public hearing, so why don't you come forward? And give us your name, please.
Okay, now, my name is Abraham Sam Frank. If I'm a bit hesitant in speaking, it's because I'm rather old, having served three years in armed forces in this country, seven and a half years, seven and a half months of continuous combat, one year overseas with the 140th Infantry Division. I am one of the people who chaired the Committee of Detroit Street that are faced with this abomination of bringing traffic down an alley which is unsafe. I will read you a letter from Department of Transportation. It's addressed to Mr. Weiss from Allen D. Rifkin, Principal Transportation Engineer, Department of California. Access driveway for the Post Mini Shopping Center located at 145 North La Brea, I beg your pardon. This is in response to your request for our department's reevaluation of access for the subject project. DOT had previously recommended access from the alley for the project as a general policy in order to minimize the interruption in the crew traffic on La Brea Avenue. They feel checked by staff reveal heavy activities in the alley by both businesses, fronting La Brea Avenue and residents loaned Detroit Street, accessing the roads from the alley. Although providing access from La Brea Avenue is not in line with DOT policy, DOT now recommends that access to the project be provided from La Brea Avenue, restricted to right turn, only ingress and egress, as additional traffic expected to be generated by the project could negatively impact the owners in the area. Now, I point you, in all honesty, it's a problem now getting in and out of my garage. My wife has to stand in the alley and act as a traffic director because people speed down the alley. You've heard from the Department of your chief engineer as to what could transpire now. She'll be afraid to even stand in the alley with additional traffic that's going to be generated. We've been there forty-three and a half years. Most of my neighbors have been there twenty years or more. All of a sudden, we're faced with this impact of this kind of traffic. Your own chief engineer said, "It's unsafe." Regardless of what the councilman said, he doesn't live there. He doesn't face all the problems that we face each and every day. We have, most of us have no driveways. It's in and out of the garage all day long, because the street's crowded up, and the cars going to the applicant's Starbucks coffee shop, and he doesn't have enough proper parking for them. So we have to go back to the alley every time we use our automobiles, and it's always a hazard. Now, picture what the hazard will be, according to a reporter and your chief transportation officer. I beg of you, recognize that myself, and we have other veterans there, my age, younger and older, have given to this country a good part of our lives, risked our lives, I'm a combat infantryman, ex-combat, why should we have to face additional dangers in our own backyard? Is that fair? Right now, he's already proposing to have an open-air garage to increase high pollution into the air, and we have to take that. When does it stop? When does a citizen have a right to say, "In my home, I should be safe, I paid my prices"? Thank you very much for your opportunity, for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. We will now close the public hearing, and let me recognize Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Chair of Planning Land Use and Management, I sat in the committee, heard the discussions on both sides of the issue, and I truly believe, and I understand, the immediate impact that this alleyway, but there are real reality checks here. If the property owner decides to break up this property, they can probably produce more of an imposition on the community if that were to happen. What you have before here today are 15 conditions that have a significant improvement in what's there today. So in light of the fact that we have to weigh these things out, and there is a decision has to be made, given the application that's in there, the conditions here that have been provided are extensive. They promote the kind of vigilance and improvements that can make the circulation better. But the bottom line is, a choice has to be made. Do we take the improvements today, right now, with what we have, or do we allow the property owner to break down this property and create further impositions without these improvements? So those are the balancing acts we have to do. This is a hard decision, has to be made. I believe the councilmember of the district, Councilmember Weiss, did his best, given what time he was given, and given the legalities of what police planning rights we have at the city to impose upon individual property owners. So I truly believe he's tried his best to deal with the whole neighborhood, given the limited options that we have. But these improvements are significant, and they talk about use of the business hours, improving the properties by providing resources to improve windows, soundproofing, landscaping, graffiti removal, et cetera, et cetera. It's a significant package. I stand to support my colleague on this.
No, excuse me, Mr. Frank. Mr. Frank, the public hearing has been closed. Let me now recognize Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Frank, I understand, I understand how strongly you feel about this, and that's why I've done what I've done, because I think the worst outcome in these sorts of situations, when it's a development project, is to win the battle and lose the war. And, and that's what I don't want to do in this community. I don't want to turn down this project, only to find that it gets resurrected by dividing these parcels up into additional projects that will then come in, however they want to come in, without requiring city approval, and then with no ability to try and benefit the whole community. So what I'm proposing, and there are many conditions, there are 15, but some of the major ones will require this entire alley to be repaved, will put speed bumps in, if DOT and the fire department will allow it, we will make the developer pay for improvements to the properties, to provide for soundproof windows, landscaping, further obstructions, and things like that, change a whole bunch--
and things like that, change a whole bunch of things with respect to how the parking lot is configured. To win the battle and lose the war would not alone be good public policy for the neighborhood. That's why I've done what I've done. This outcome, Mr. Frank, is better for you than that outcome, and I appreciate what Mr. Reyes said, and I appreciate his courtesy here in committee. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. All right, we have the recommendation from Mr. Weiss, as well as Mr. Reyes from Plumb Committee. I think the attached conditions are redistributed. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, that matter is approved. Next item?
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Let me invite Mr. Candido Maras to address us.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm here to address the motion that Councilman Smith has presented today, in regards to the illegal postage of signs. For twenty years, as you know, Madam President, I've worked in the San Fernando Valley cleanup of the Pidi. This has become a black eye to our community. It's something that is affecting the quality of life, and Councilman Smith, I thank you for that, and I hope that you'll have the support from this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maras. That was the only card submitted on public comment, so I will now close the public comment. Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Smith requests to be excused for city business Wednesday, August 13th, to leave at 11:00 a.m., a motion is required.
Mr. Villarosa moves, Mr. Labange seconds, Mr. Smith is excused to leave early.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused, August 12th, for personal business, that meets council policy.
Councilman Cardenas is excused.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Friday, September 5th, for city business, that meets council policy.
Mr. Garcetti is excused.
Councilmember Misakowski requests to be excused Friday, November 7th, November 12th and 14th, for personal business, that meets council policy.
That excuse is approved.
And Councilmember Zain requests to be excused Friday, September 5th, to arrive at 11:45. City business, that also meets council policy.
Mr. Zain is excused.
And at the desk.
All right, members, that the desk is cleared, are there announcements? Mr. Garcetti?
Madam President, Councilmember Villarosa and myself, this weekend, tomorrow, are going to be at the Crestmore steps in Glassell Park, looking at bringing those steps, cleaning them up, bring them up to their old splendor and glory, and doing a neighborhood cleanup in the area, so we invite folks, 11:30, who live in the Glassell Park area, to join us at the Crestmore steps for that cleanup. I also wanted to recognize a woman who's just walking through the chambers right now, Ms. Lee Cummings, who is a great leader in the community, in the Filipino community, a woman who has battled for many years against drug abuse in our community, who's a publisher, a great singer, and many other things, so thank you, Ms. Cummings, for joining us today as well.
Are there announcements? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of announcements. This evening, the University 7th, the Advantage Church is celebrating its 95th anniversary. Program starts tonight at 7:00 p.m., and that's located at 1135 West Martin Luther King Boulevard. Also tomorrow, there's the St. Bridges Catholic Church is having their family safety and health fair, 5214 Southwestern, at 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Also on Saturday, the Good Neighbor of 84th Street Block Club will have their fifth annual street party at 1903 West 84th Place, 12:00 noon to 5:30 p.m. And also on Saturday, one of our great leaders had passed recently, Mr. Celeste King, his family will be honoring him at the corner of Dinkerton and King Boulevard, 1530 West Martin Luther King Boulevard, at 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. on a neighborhood ceremony.
Any other announcement, members? Mr. Labange?
For all the public watching this Sunday, the Symphony in the Glen will take place in the old zoo area of Griffith Park. It's a wonderful orchestra, led by Arthur Rubenstein, and it's a great activity, and it's a wonderful job that the Department of Recreation Parks has done in revitalizing the old zoo area. How many remember the old zoo? Huh? Oh, Eric, you don't remember the old zoo. Well, now you remember the old zoo that is new, but now you don't remember the old zoo that is zoo. Oh, no. No, no, the Lincoln Park, okay, Ed, you got it. The Sea League Zoo, Ed's got us all beat. Anyway, it's this Sunday in the afternoon, visit the merry-go-round, park in the area there, walk up, it's a wonderful, wonderful activity, great music. Thank you. Symphony in the Glen, Sunday, 6:00 p.m., Griffith Park.
Mr. Lover?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to say that on the first day of council, for me, I had the honor of having my son sitting here in my lap, and this gentleman's father is too humble today to acknowledge, but I just wanted to acknowledge Antonio Villarosa Jr. is here today. Hi, Toledo.
All right, are there adjourning motions? Members, are there adjourning motions? Can I ask everyone to please rise for adjourning tributes? Let me recognize Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a adjourning motion in honor of Drew Rucker, 18-year-old All-American linebacker who was bound to attend USC, died of unfortunate drowning incident on Monday, July 21st this year. Many football experts considered Mr. Drucker to be one of the top high school linebackers in the state. He was a first-team selection in the All-CIF Southern Section, he was a Cal High Sports All-Star team, and named to the Super Prep All-American Team at the end of the 2002 high school season. Just recently, on August 4th, there was a memorial ceremony at Huntington Beach, Huntington State Beach, to honor him at the site in which he took his final and fatal swim. He survived by his mother, Adrian Stoker, and father, Andre Rucker.
Mr. Villarosa?
I want to adjourn today's council meeting in memory of Virginia Molina. Señora Molina was a longtime resident of South Los Angeles, I mean, emigrated from El Salvador in the 1940s. She passed away on Thursday, July 31st, she would have been 93 on August 12th. Her husband, Nicolás Molina, passed away in 1993. Señora Molina survived by her seven children, Angelica, Enrique, Antonia, Dimas, Catalina, Manuel, and Quiermo. She's also survived by her grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and great-great-great-grandchildren. I extend my deepest sympathies to Señora Molina's family, and I especially want to convey my sympathy to Sarai Molina, who's on my staff, and is the loving granddaughter of Virginia Molina.
I would like to second that. Madam Clerk, call the roll. Counsel is adjourned.